Get me to sixty-two, but it's not gonna...
That's excellent.
And she said, "And every year I'm getting these huge paycheck increases, salary increases." And that's, I get half of it. I get not only the salary increase, but I'm getting half of that every year, right? So it's hard for them to believe, and that's how they keep on there.
Dad happened to be in on the conversation, so he's beautiful people. He's sitting there, and she's telling the story. So that's how they're keeping it. But they're having just as much trouble as we do. They all want to live somewhere. That's what she said. Every kid that graduates from college, they want to stay there. So...
in this country, anywhere that you want. They're obvious. You don't need a lifestyle, you don't need a culture, you don't need that lifestyle, right?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, then just...
Don't fight some, don't try some. The best thing is that...
Okay.
Forces.
Okay.
Well, you planted your roots here, which is awesome. And that's kind of what I'm stating serious. I have no connection. I find...
Not that I can...
My people's just friends.
Sometimes, my kids do. That's really my role here.
Yeah, the life form.
Yeah, it's been so good.
There's no figure that out. It must come in that long class.
Also, that obviously is a real deal. And also, institution that I said, I need to watch for the time I got to cheap, and then I'm going to get to it.
There's no...
It's weird.
Small rooms.
Two and a half hours, three hours.
Very much. We all saw it.
We understand this is a...
We have a simple, uh, president, we have this board, and I would...
How do you get that?
I would say that...
That's really my role here.
Yeah, the life form.
Yeah, it's been so good.
There's no one...
I still...
There's no one...
I still...
I don't know.
I'm not sure.
There's no figure that out. It must come in that long class.
I'll fill that, I'll decide whether I'm going to go.
And I'll say, "I'm interested."
Is this a...
I'm sorry.
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 Who are you guys?
Oh.
I was...
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 Yes, but you need to have a mic.
My mic's working.
No.
I have a mic.
She's...
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 Yeah, yeah, yeah.
She's...
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 Okay, my question is here.
I'm checking that.
She doesn't...
She doesn't...
She doesn't...
At all.
Right.
I don't know where to...
I don't know.
We keep it all the time, we do all the time.
Okay.
We spend first, we call it one of the...
And so, we'll have to do that anyway.
Yes.
Because it's like...
I think...
It's...
This team, however...
So, um...
Of future events.
So, yes.
That's...
I was...
I was...
I was...
Why does anybody sit up for us?
I'll sit up for them.
I thought that...
As we say, those who work for you.
I'll sit up for them.
Good.
I'm not...
I'm not...
I'm not...
Are the new members getting...
This is the...
They're never gonna see the...
Why the new members didn't get to session?
Had the new members who didn't get to session?
Had the new...
Yeah.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
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 Yeah.
So...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
That was...
Yep.
All of you.
All right.
So, we're just...
Yes.
Thank you.
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 No.
The chairman has been selected or...
Oh, I thought that was...
Okay.
All right.
That was...
Yep.
All of you.
All right.
So, we're just...
All people.
Thank you.
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 Well, what we're going for today is...
Yes.
Here's the thing, um, for any, is how far down, is about how much longer I...
So, it's really...
So, I'm just...
You should have...
This week...
This week's...
Are you okay over this?
Well, are you gonna stay for...
I'm...
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 Oh, I'm sure you...
I don't control it.
I think you're...
I don't.
Well, that was great.
Well, I have some...
Do you have some...
Some...
So, what is budget?
It's...
I'm very busy.
It's...
I'm very busy.
It's...
I'm very busy.
It's...
I'm very busy.
It's...
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 Oh, I'm sure you...
I don't control it.
I think you're...
I don't.
Well, that was great.
So, guys have some...
Do you...
Some...
They don't...
So, what is budget?
It's...
It's...
I would say we can be still. I'm still on three.
I'm not seeing. I'm not seeing. Getting strong now.
We're all sitting down.
We are.
I believe so.
I'm still. For a long time, the rest of the scores has changed.
Yeah. In the South End. I don't like what I see.
That's what we need to score.
I'll ask you.
You ready?
Yes.
Ready, Mr. Wheeler?
Am I ready? I'm ready.
Hey, welcome, everybody. Would like to call to order this UNA County School District Number One School Board Meeting. I need a motion to approve it.
So moved, second.
Second. Got a motion and a second. So with that, we need to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty as its throne. Thank you very much. The first thing we need to take care of today is our newly elected officials on the school board and the Board of Trustees. So we need to have an oath of office for those people.
So if you were just elected.
So if you were just elected. You've been appointed.
You guys can't write stuff?
Right up front, right here.
Okay, everyone, raise your right hand, please. I need you all to repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
That I have not knowingly violated any law.
That I have not knowingly violated any law.
Related to my election or appointment.
Related to my election or appointment.
Or caused it to be done by others.
Or caused it to be done by others.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And I will discharge my duties of my office with fidelity.
You're official. Congratulations.
So now, we're kind of in a unique situation. We have an individual that chose not to fill the seat that he was elected for. And so we have an appointment to fill his seat for a two-year term. And that is Brian Woodward. And so we will have to swear Brian in at this time.
Need to do a motion?
Oh, I need a motion, sorry. I need a motion to approve Brian Woodward to be a member of the UNA County School District Number One Board of Trustees.
So moved.
Second. Dan. Dan, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I think you heard it, Brian, so just go ahead and resign. Raise your right hand, please. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
The Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
That I have not knowingly violated any law.
That I have not knowingly violated any law.
Related to my election or appointment.
Related to my election or appointment.
Or caused it to be done by others.
Caused it to be done by others.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
That I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Very good. Now comes the exciting part. So now, we need to have a vote on filling some offices that need to be filled because we have got a new board coming in. So first off, we need to find a chairman.
Mr. Vice Chairman, the way we've done that is we accept nominations.
Yes.
You can do it by open vote, or you can do it by closed vote. Depending on the number of nominations.
What would you like to do, open vote, or?
I'm okay with open vote.
So am I.
Yeah, I'm okay with open vote.
Need nominations.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate David Peterson.
Need a second?
Second.
That was kind of quick, sorry. I appreciate that. So the next we need to fill is we need to fill.
Well, you have to vote.
Any other nominations?
Any other nominations, I am sorry. I'm already frustrated. So, any other nominations?
All in favor?
All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed?
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Reverend Peterson, now we need to accept nominations for vice.
Yes.
I'll nominate Jenny Lowen. I thought you were leaving.
You already got a second, Jen.
Anybody opposed? All in favor?
You need to ask, is there any further nominations?
Is there any further nominations?
Okay. Sorry about that, Chair. Seeing's done, we'll proceed to vote.
Seeing's done, we'll proceed to vote. Yeah, you got the wrong Dave.
I know. I told you. I'll help.
Okay.
I'm a part of nature.
Okay. I know you used to teach it. So if there is none, then all in favor?
Aye.
Any of you? Okay. Next, we have to fill our treasurer position. Do we have any nominations for our treasury position?
I nominate Caleb Guild.
I second that motion. Her nomination.
Do we have any other nominations at this time?
I think I was.
Oh, you were? I was gonna say, what? Jenny, do it again. Can't do both.
Can't do both. All in favor of Caleb Guild being the treasurer for the Board of Trustees?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Trevor. Okay, the next position we need to fill is the clerk position.
So that's what Dan's been doing, right?
I'm the clerk now, and I would continue to do that if that's all right with everybody else.
That is awesome.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Dan Wheeler, second.
Is there any other nominations at this time?
I don't know.
Everybody.
Half the board.
Half the boards. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Wheeler. Awesome job. So at this time, do we need to fill any of the vacancies or anything that we have on any of the other boards?
I was gonna mention, I am currently sitting on the rec board, but my son is starting into basketball and soccer, and so I'm not going to make all of those meetings. If there's any of the new board members that would be interested in sitting on that board, they meet once a month on Thursday nights. So if there's anyone interested, that would be great. If not, I will still do it, but I won't be at all meetings.
Chairman Peterson, what we need to do is that you need to be on the agenda.
Okay.
So we can do that next month in January. Those who are currently holding those positions need to communicate to us if they would like someone else to take those places. We're all full, and Jenny was on the rec board. If she would like to give that to someone else, we can just bring that up next month. The rec board's interesting. We have four spots. They don't have to be board members. Personally, I like that they're board members because of the influence and the impact that those organizations have with each other. So I would love to have someone on the board fill that. We have two that are filled by board members now, two that are appointed by our board, so they still have impact.
And like I said, if there isn't anybody that feels like they could do it, or they want to, then I'll continue to do that, but.
We'll put that on the agenda for next month.
So if we can add that to the agenda. And how many of them? There are, I know the Boxy's and the rec board.
Cbar V, right?
Cbar V.
Dan, Cbar V. Rec board, I believe, is Krista, nope.
No, Dan.
Not the rec board.
Boxy's, it's me, Krista, and Dan are on there right now, so.
Yeah. And if you guys are okay with that, then we don't have the potential opening on the rec board.
I will put it on the agenda next time, but I think I want to step down from the Boxy's, so.
Okay.
You're the talker there, too?
Well, I know, no, Dan is the talker there.
Dan's the chair?
Yeah, I was the chair, but anyway, Dan's over there now, so. So anything else? Nope, we're all set? Okay. The next thing we need to do is approve the agenda.
Chairman Peterson, I do need to make two changes to the agenda. If you look on the list, we do not have an action item A. There's no personnel tonight.
Okay.
So since we're changing the agenda, I would encourage that we take that off.
Okay.
We also need to add now would be an H, which would deal with the Red Devil Water Project.
Okay.
So now, A will be approved by the audit. We'll just slide everything out.
Okay. All right. So I need to have a motion to approve the agenda as set forth by moving, removing item A and adding item H, a new H for the Red Devil Ranch water project.
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
Any discussion? At this time? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks. Next we have is we have to approve the consent agenda items. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
So I have a first by Dave and a second by Jenny. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have to recuse myself from two checks.
Okay.
120, 146, and 120, 196.
On the payment of bills, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
We're supposed to go first.
Okay. Next on our list is some recognitions. And a couple of recognitions that we have out here that is pretty cool. The first is, do you want to take it, Ryan, or do you want me to?
You're doing good.
Want me to?
Go ahead.
Okay. So the first we want to recognize the Evanston High School Boys and Girls Golf Team at State. I think both programs finished second, right? Awesome. So Mr. Carroll, if you want to come up and present your teams, and it will be great to hear from you. This is awesome, because I thought they were going to be all opposed to these.
We were asked to have one of our students present our team here, but they're gonna, come on up.
The mic isn't on you.
We're just gonna have Hadley say something nice about it, and hopefully we'll ask her a few questions.
So I've been on the team the last three years, and I've loved it. And it's become like a second family to me, and just because I love being with them every day and practicing with them every day.
Okay, so if you come up to the mic, because I want to meet every one of you, but what I'd like to know is your name and what grade you're in, and how you did at State.
Okay.
So obviously, you both finished second, so that would be awesome.
Yes, okay. So I'm Hadley Blackwell. I was the senior captain. I finished fifth at State, and I earned Allstate.
Awesome. Thank you.
I'm Ally Sanchez. I'm a junior, and I finished 11th at State. I struggled a little bit, but I'm gonna do better next year.
I'm Haley Ridenhour, and I finished eighth at State, and I took eighth at conference, too.
I'm Marley Torres, and I'm a sophomore, and I didn't go to State.
Next year.
Next year.
I'm Sam Dollzall. I'm a junior, and I finished second at State, and I was Allstate.
Awesome.
I'm Porter Hall, and I took 13th at State, and I was Allconference. I'm Jackson Hall, and I did not go to State, but next year I will.
What grade?
Ninth.
I'm Kate Brady, and I'm a freshman, and I placed 28th at State.
I'm Kenan Nebiker. I'm a junior, and I didn't go to State.
I'm Jordan Staley. I'm a junior, and I did not go to State.
So let's see your trophies here, real quick. Stand up, show the crowd your accomplishments. Awesome. Fantastic. Thank you, coaches, for your involvement and everything you do for this district.
I would like to say something as my mic on. I am not a golfer, first of all. I know nothing about it. But I went to state golf in Buffalo this year. And I do want these students to know I was impressed with their self-discipline, their confidence, the way they conducted themselves. And I want you to know, I will be in Wardland next year to watch you. And I'm very respectful of golf now. I think you are amazing on that sport. I have a new appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you.
One thing about that, as these kids came up, some of them were fairly humble. You know, they talked about, oh, I didn't go to State. But Marley was the JV champion this year as a sophomore. We used to have a lot of really, really good golfers, young golfers. We lost three seniors this year. So that's really good news for next year. We feel like we're gonna have an impact. The problem was, the Riverton boys who beat us, they don't graduate anybody, and the Wiegand girls don't graduate anybody. So it's gonna be a real grind to try to do that. The other thing, this hasn't came out yet, but the grades, I think those girls are gonna come out with a 4.0 as a team. Those are some quality young kids, and they do represent us well. Thank you for having us up here.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Next on here, and I don't see John anywhere.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in appreciation of John DuBois's service on the board, we did reach out, and we've provided him a plaque for his service. John was a very hard-working board member, and he'll be missed, and we appreciated his service.
I'd like to publicly thank him as well. He was an awesome board member, and had to see him work and do the things that he did, and his commitment to this board was amazing. So if you didn't know who John was, he was a committed member and did a fantastic job, so. Even though he's not here, I'd like to give him a round of appreciation, so. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is we have a presentation on our budget audit. Everybody stay awake, please.
Great turnout.
Great turnout, they're just here for you. I know, awesome. Yeah.
Hopefully, everything fits then, so. And we're just gonna put it up behind you guys, so you can follow through that way. We thought that might be the easiest for you. All right. And I promise I won't take much of your time. I know you guys are busy, and people behind me are probably busy as well. So my mother-in-law, who's had the privilege of knowing me for eight-plus years, didn't know what an auditor did. She had to get an audit at one of the places she works at and asked what it entailed. So what we're gonna do tonight is kind of go through what opinions we give you guys. And they're actually the opinions that we send your financials to the federal clearinghouse. The feds look at your audit, and these are the things that they look at, or what opinions we gave you. So starting is in the report of independent auditor. And like I said, I've got this behind you, or I guess you guys have it there. In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental business-type activities, aggregate discreetly presented component units, each major fund, and the remaining fund information of the district. So that opinion covers pages 19 to 55. So, and that is an unmodified opinion. It's the best opinion that you can give. It essentially states that your financial statements are materially correct. Then on page three, we give another opinion. And this opinion is in regards to the component units and the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. That's the federal money that you guys spent during the fiscal year. And we state that they were fairly stated in all material respects in relation to the basic financial statements as a whole. So that's another item that we look at. Real quick, pages four through 18, this is the MDNA, Management's Discussion and Analysis. This is actually prepared by John, and this gives really good comparative information for what you would find in the financial statements. It gives it in a more narrative format. It's pretty easy to follow. So if you're wanting to kind of go into the financial statements at all, I would recommend starting there, as everything's pretty well put out, quantitative and qualitative. The one number that I'm gonna bring up is on page 21. And this is in regards to your general fund fund balance. So down here, you'll see your general fund, and what amounts are restricted and what amounts are unassigned. You had committed about $500,000 to the track project. There was about $850,000 that was committed for other things. So what was unassigned at June 30, and this is the amount that was really, that could be spent at the discretion of the board, was $5.6 million. And then on page 23, the biggest item there that you'll notice is this right here, the excess deficiency of revenues over expenditures. This just means that the general fund received about $1.7 million more than they spent in that fiscal year, which is usually a good sign, so. Page 61. This is, we are supposed to look at the budget and make sure that you are in compliance in regards to spending in the budget. We state there were no instances in which actual expenditures exceeded budgeted expenditures at the cash basis functional level. So you were in state statute compliance at that point. Our next report that we give is in regards to internal controls. What we state here is that we did identify a deficiency in internal control described in something following that we'll talk about real quick. And then we don't express any opinion in regards to compliance of the internal controls. In regards to compliance, and this is for your federal expenditures, we state in our opinion, UNA County School District One complied in all material respects with the types of compliance requirements referred to above that could have a direct and material effect on each of the major federal programs. And I'll discuss which programs were major federal programs during the year. And then on internal control over the federal spending, we state we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control over compliance. So all your internal controls with federal money, everything was in good shape there. So this is our summary page. This is a great page for you guys, kind of breaks everything down. We expressed an unmodified opinion on the basic financial statements. Once again, that's the best opinion you can receive. We disclosed one deficiency, one significant deficiency. I'll talk about that real quick next. The deficiency was not considered a material weakness. We disclose no compliance findings material to the financial statements. In regards to the federal awards, we expressed an unmodified opinion on compliance. We identified no material weaknesses in internal controls over programs, and no compliance findings over those programs. And this year, the programs that were selected for single audit were Title 1A, and then the S.R. funds as well. In regards to the internal control finding, the finding is the size of the district staff is not large enough to permit a complete segregation of duties. I want to make it very clear, this isn't a finding against the business office. This is a finding against the size of the business office. It's just too small to allow a complete segregation of duties. And it's really just our job to make sure you guys are aware of it, to keep doing your due diligence as you go through and review all the financial information that's given to you. So that's kind of what I've got. Those are the different reports that we give, the different opinions that we state. I know that John and myself would love to talk about the financial statements for an hour and a half plus. If any of you guys have any questions in regards to them, or want more, something more thorough, please reach out to John or myself. I'd love to go through them a little more thoroughly with you, if that's what you choose. However, that's kind of, we feel that we've given you now everything that we are required to in regards to the communication with governance. So do you guys have any questions for me?
So what can, so the audit basically says we're in good shape.
You're in good shape.
You didn't say that, so I just wondered what the bottom line was. I knew it was, but.
Audit was good. The audit turned out well. Yep.
John's still doing a great job.
He, John and his staff are still doing a great job. They give everything to us. Very quickly, John comes in, even throughout the year, if there's any possible issues. So we never surprised with anything by the time we come during audit. And everything was in great shape this year, so.
I have one question.
Yeah.
So you say that the office is not big enough to segregate. Do you make suggestions on how to correct that?
What we try to do is we try to look at your internal controls, and if there's a glaring issue, we definitely bring that up with management of, hey, maybe this should be done by someone else. With this district, we haven't really had any of those issues. I believe that you guys have mitigated the risks as best as possible with the size of staff that you have.
Mr. Chairman, I may, this will be a finding that we'll always have.
Yeah.
We need to hire one additional full-time person to be in compliance. We feel that that would not fit in with all the other areas we've restricted and cut.
Just something we face every audit.
Yep.
Every time we get audited, we have to deal with it, so.
Yep.
Any other questions? Nice job. Fantastic job, John. Thank you very much for your work with this district, so appreciate it. Thank you. So next on the agenda, we have a presentation and reports from the Evanston High School math team on PLC. Oh, nice. That was perfect timing. So. So I'm like, nobody talked to us today. I'm like, okay, you guys are rock stars. What's your walk-up song? Oh, that's your walk-up song, that's what it is? Okay. Okay.
And I just plug it in.
What is it? Crazy trailer. Hang on. The floor is yours.
Hi, I'm Belinda Hancock. I'm the math department head of the high school, and we have the whole math department here. So we were asked to come and talk about our PLC groups and all the progress we've been making the last couple of years. So I just have like the four items that we were gonna talk about. So first, I was gonna talk about, we keep a running agenda for our teams, so we have it separated where each PLC team has an hour, or you know, class hour to work together. So this is where we focus on our four PLC questions. And I could probably make that a little bigger, so you guys can see it a little better. So this is what we did last week, and it kinda just shows you that we have our four PLC questions, and what we plan on our students to learn for the week, or the week, and however many days we have the next week. So we're all keeping on pace, and making sure we have our proficiency skills and our priority standards aligned. We talk about our common CFAs, and you know, what we're gonna do if they don't respond. But, a lot of our work comes from our proficiency skills that we've been working on for the last couple of years. But, who was gonna talk about that?
So, hi, I'm Kelly Wolser. I am a math teacher at high school. So, we just stepping in into this department, it's been great having these proficiency scales, because it go ahead and identifies, and it really shares with our students where our priority standards are. So what we really want them to focus on in each unit. And then below, we have all of our success criteria. So we divide it up by Level Two, Level Three, and Level Four concepts. And we try to have them keep track of how they're doing on each level, so that they can see where they're at with those. And then, below our success criteria, we have our daily planner, which is that fifteen-day challenge that we adopted from Maria Nelson, Maria Nielsen. So this has been great for, I think, every individual little PLC breakout group. So for example, Algebra, we have like seven of us working together. We're all trying to stay on the same page, and stay on the same instructional day. So, we always have all of our resources broken up by each day. We always have our learning targets, all of our success criteria is written on those days. And we try to plan out the entire unit, and talk about basically when we're gonna have those certain CFAs, and what our review is gonna look like, and then what our test is gonna be.
And I just wanted to add in there, we have like different links. You see they're in different colors, so that gives us, that takes us to our resources. So we all try to stay with the same resources, so we're teaching the same critical content, and common grading scales, and different stuff like that, so. And then, what really drives our instruction is our data.
(inaudible)
Well, yeah, I'm just here for morals.
So, we have a school goal of seventy-five percent proficiency throughout the school. Proficiency is basically ninety percent or above. We set our department goal at seventy percent proficiency. This helps us determine, have we met our goals for the school? And if we're not, what are we doing to make sure that each student is meeting their goals? We're giving equality, equal education to every student. So not every student is gonna learn at the same pace. This helps ensure that we see which students aren't learning at the same pace, aren't reaching the proficiency, and then we can get those students in for the Devil Pride Time. Devil Pride Time is a big part of making sure we meet those goals. It also looks at, like I teach the Fed students, so if I'm only hitting fifty percent proficiency, but I see another teacher hitting ninety percent proficiency with their students, I'm gonna go talk to that teacher and say, hey, help me. How did you teach this? And then also, if I can't communicate with that teacher, I can go and say, my student needs help. We've taught and taught and taught, and they're still not getting it. Go see this teacher for Devil Pride Time. You know, so it's very beneficial to our students to make sure they're progressing forward.
So is Devil Pride Time the best time, like for tutoring, I guess?
Yeah.
And they can...
So it's the designated time that we have, like at least twice a week, usually three days a week, okay? The best time, if they need one-on-one, is still after school or before school, but, you know. So I was just gonna add, you know, I'm older than Dave Bennett. And I've been through five different minutes. And I'm not sure how many principals. More than five principals, including Doug as a vice principal, and including Ryan as our principal for at least one year. And it's kinda hard to teach an old dog new tricks. And you guys know how the educational pendulum swings back and forth. So in the whole time that I've been here, the work we're doing with PLCs and with, you know, working with each other, is probably the most useful thing that I've seen in the time that I've been teaching. And I think Merle Lester and Scott Kohler are more positive and encouraging, and harder working than any principal that I've worked with. Sorry, Ryan.
Just one year.
So, that's my defense.
So the seventy-five proficient, that's a pretty hefty goal.
It is. We started with eighty, then you back off.
I know, I'm thinking, are you backing off a little bit? I mean, 'cause that's...
We're not quite there yet, but...
But, you know, we're lofty. Like, we want, we want...
High expectations.
I know, high expectations. And I appreciate that. I just, I just know kinda what we've been in the past, and it's seventy-five, that's a pretty good goal, so.
Yeah, this helps us to get to the goal, because when you can see who still needs the help, you can set them up with Pride Time, you can ask them to come in before or after school, you can give them that individualized attention that then helps them to learn it. Instead of just going, well, they didn't get it, but we're gonna move on, you keep working with them, keep working with them until they do get it. They can retake a test as many times as they need to, until they hit that proficiency. And therefore, seventy-five percent, while it is lofty, is not unreachable.
So how many of those kids fall into a Tier Two that are falling behind? Do you have any of them, or do you...
Most of my students are...
I'm sorry.
Red Devil Pride is our Tier Two, isn't it?
Yeah, okay.
So we assign all the ones who have, who are below basic on our things, and then encourage those who are not proficient yet to sign up on their own. But we don't always have room for all of those in the regular thing. Thing I would like our parents to know, is if their kid says, my teacher won't help me, or I just don't get it, and I don't know what to do, tell them there are things that they can do, and talk to us.
And another thing I'd like to point out with everything that we've presented so far, we're a team, and we get busy in our day. We don't always have a chance to communicate with each other. This helps us stay in communication with each other, and it helps maintain that we're a team, and we're all moving in the same direction with the same goals in mind. And, I mean, our overall goal is that the students that come through our classroom are better after they leave our classroom. Not just as in their mathematic knowledge, but as people too.
So as far as different content on math, obviously, we got upper-level, lower-level stuff. Do you have multiple PLCs that you guys meet with, or do you guys just meet as one PLC team?
Well, yeah, if we go back here, we can see on Mondays, the Algebra One team meets, and there's, gosh, how many? Five of us, five out of seven of us on that team. And then Precalc Trig meet, because they're not on the team, so they meet on Mondays. But we have it broken up, so each day, we have different teams that meet. And then on Wednesdays, we come together as a group, all in same room, and that's when we really have our Data Day. So that's when we really dig deep into the math data, and we update that weekly, we have it updated before we come in. And that really drives that day, you know, what do we need to reteach? What do we need to, how many sections of Pride Time do we need for each section? Oh, we're good with this one, we need to concentrate on this one. So, yeah, to answer your question, we do each have one, except for I think our single tens, even our single tens, you still have that Day Two. Yeah.
Fridays, the Calculus PLC team meets, and we've had a hundred percent attendance. And we all agree on everything. But we're a little behind the rest of the things on writing our proficiency scales in fifteen-day plan.
Do you want to clarify why you're a hundred percent attendance here?
He's feeling low. Just in case everybody doesn't know that, right?
Yeah, just, yeah, I guess I'd have to...
He's digger.
Digger.
Yeah, and then if you notice on this, just, there are tabs down here. So this is just Algebra One we're looking at right now, but we have a different tab for each core subject with different standards and our different proficiencies, so.
I'm sorry, I have to leave, but I will say my junior complimented, I think it was you, Ethan? Do you have Ethan?
Well, I did last year.
Okay, he just talked about how much he's learned in this last couple of years. So, my boys have all been very proficient in math, but I feel like he's definitely, out of all of them, he's the most proficient. And he did compliment that everyone, like, he's like, math has just gotten so much better in the last couple of years, where, you know, he really, and that's, that means a lot coming from a junior, so, and a boy. Thank you guys for what you do.
Thank you. And then just our last thing that we're gonna quickly talk about is just our Pride Time. We have a sheet where we organize all of our Pride Times, so.
So that was Guy and I. So I was hoping I'd be towards the end, so I wouldn't have very much to say, and people have covered things pretty well, so I don't have too much left to say. But what I can say is that we use this spreadsheet to, first of all, know who's doing what during Pride Time. So we use that data to know who's doing, well, first of all, to know what we need, and then we use this spreadsheet to spread that out among the teachers who are teaching that particular topic. And then, we take turns entering that into Pride Time, so when the kids go to sign up in Pride Time, it's available for them, right? And that's also the place that we can go to sign up individual kids. We have a program called Mastery Connect that Doug has been really instrumental in getting for us. So we can go through that Mastery Connect and see how each individual kid, we're not gonna show that, 'cause it would give too much private information. However, we can go through and easily find which kids need to be in which section, even with which teacher. So it's really, really useful to be able to put that together.
Yes, and this also helps us spread out the load, because, you know, in one unit, we have three different standards. So then we can kinda separate up the standards and really focus on, you know, what we felt like we did pretty well, Lynn, and that helps us assign those as well, so we can get those students into those classes where they can get the targeted instruction.
This is also, the data sheet comes in that we showed, where if we have a teacher that has a high level of proficiency, that's the teacher we want covering Devil Pride Time, because obviously, they're teaching it in some way that the kids are getting it. So we're using the skills of everybody in the team at the top level.
Any questions?
I do.
Go for it, David.
I've had people comment, and I don't, so please introduce yourselves.
Oh.
Nobody, we didn't get everybody's name. And maybe we should have you stand up, so everybody gets to see you, non-teasing.
I know. It's kind of rude.
So, okay, anyway.
I was thinking to myself, we should put the mic. So I'm Wendy Prep, and I teach Fast Track, Quantitative Reasoning, and Algebra One.
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'm Erin Hopkins, I teach whatever they need on me, too.
I'm Guy Hawkes, I teach Algebra Two and Quick Counters.
I'm Michelle Bedoff, I teach Trick Quick Count, Algebra Two, and Stats.
I'm Loretta Carpenter, and I have the Fed Math for Algebra One, Geometry, and Algebra Two.
And the team talk with Ms. Prep.
Hi, I'm Kelly Wolser, I teach Algebra One and Geometry.
And I did introduce myself for not all of you. I'm Belinda Hancock, I teach Algebra, Geometry, and Fast Track, Algebra, Geometry.
Anything else?
Yeah, I have a comment. Yeah. I think this is the third PLC group we've had, and it's the same echo of the interaction, the cooperation, how you measure the success. I'm impressed. I just, a job well done. And the other thing that echoes true is, you are, this is your first year?
Yes.
There's been other teachers who said that this was their first year, and by being in this team and the process, made your first year a lot better.
Yes, it definitely did. It made me feel a lot more comfortable coming in to this department, and it's not like, I was just blindsided. Like, I, they had a game plan, and I jumped in on it, and it was just so great.
Good, that's great.
You should know this has been on better trial and error. Like, what you're seeing is a really nice product, and it's taken three very years of very hard work, and I'd really like to compliment Ms. Hancock, like, she's been a stalwart leader, and much of this she has put together, and we tweaked it along the way, but she's the one that started the template and got it going for us, so.
Well, I'd like to compliment all of you, you know, in particular.
Well, and I would just like to tell you how much I appreciate all the extra time that you guys put in, particularly Mrs. Bedoff. This year, my son usually does extremely well in math, and he had a section that he was struggling with, and she met with him before school, and is helping him through that. And that takes a lot of extra time on your guys' behalf to make sure that these kids are learning, and not just moving on, like you said, and saying, well, they didn't get it, but too bad, 'cause we have to move on. So I really appreciate all the time that you guys put in.
Thank you.
Thank you for your commitment to our kids.
Yep. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. You got the exit sign, you're throwing up. It doesn't sound that way. That's why I said home run. That's more of the crowd.
Oh, we do have one more here.
Thank you, man.
So I, we do have one more PLC team we would like to meet with, and that's the team from Aspen. I don't know how to clear a room.
Yeah, yeah. They made the right choice.
Alright, so I think so far, since I've been here, it's always been Madam Chair, so what do we call, do we call Sir Chair? And members of the board... Hey, you know what? I've been called Madam Chair the time I feel difficult, so I'm good with whatever you wanna call me. At least three times I was called Madam Chair, so we're good.
Alright, members of the board, happy to be here with you today. I'm here with our fourth-grade PLC team. Today, we have Rhonda Hershey, is our special ed teacher, who is an intricate part of our team. We have Jody Mitchell as well. Chloe Reifin is here with us, she's a brand-new teacher for us. We also have Stacy Largent, part of our team, but she is taking a literacy class right now, so that's the only way she was able to get out of this, is by taking a class to better herself. This is one of the teams I love working with the most. They always start out with a getting-to-know-you little game, which is super fun. They believe, and I also believe, that you care about the people who you get to know, and so that's a big part of our thing with our fourth-grade team. They care about the kids at Aspen Elementary, they care about Aspen, our school, and they also care about each other. Teaching is hard work, and really working together is a huge part of that, to make things better. I started teaching at Pineview Middle School in St. George all the way back in the nineteen-hundreds, if you guys remember that, those days. But anyway, with that, I remember I started teaching there, the principal was great, the teachers were really good, too, but I was like the Lone Ranger. I would come in, I would plan by myself, I would teach by myself, I'd make up my own assessments. And the thing that I regret the most is that I didn't have a team working together, like we have with PLCs, where we could really plan together, where we could make up our assessments together, we could look at our data together and learn how, you know, what can we do better to help more kids learn more? And so that's definitely what this team does, along with the rest of our teams at Aspen Elementary School. So I'm just super grateful, though I don't have four Lone Rangers who have to come up with their own stuff, but no, we have an amazing team working together to help more kids learn more. So, without further ado, I'm gonna turn the time over to them, and my job will be to push the button to go onto the next slide.
So I gotta interrupt you.
Yes.
So we have new board members, name and where you are at, so, anyway.
I'm not that important, that everyone just... Yeah, so I'm Steve Peterson, principal at Aspen Elementary School, and as well, these teachers, as they will come up... teachers, as they will come up, they will introduce themselves as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
Like Steve said, I'm Jody Mitchell. I, this is my eighth year teaching and fifth year, fifth year in the district. I also want to add, we have Kirsten Foster on our team, she's our three, four resource, and Rhonda covers four and five, so we get double the help, which is awesome. I'm gonna start with a quote. The most valuable resource that all teachers have is each other. Without collaboration, our growth is limited to our own perspectives. And I'm lucky enough to have always worked under the PLC process, even in my previous district, and so I fully believe in this. My job has been, I can't imagine not working on a team with collaboration, so.
So we're gonna talk about some celebrations first. To start off, at Aspen, and I think all schools do it right, they'll start Mondays, that gives us extra time to meet in the morning with our PLC, so we don't have to interrupt our planning time, which has been very beneficial, and has helped me a ton with being a first year teacher. There is a lot of planning to do, so I've really appreciated that. Our team has also picked a second day to meet. We usually meet on Wednesdays, and during this time, we would go over, either depending on which day, math or ELA, and they're super flexible, so sometimes I'm still stuck on ELA, and we've already done it once that week, and my team will help me depending on what I need or depending what our students need. So it's been really beneficial overall, I think, for all of us, which has been very helpful. Anything to add to that?
So this is, I think, my seventh year as a resource teacher. I was two years as general ed, and when I first started, same thing, I was a Lone Ranger. I was with a new teacher and a, and a seasoned teacher, but we were kind of on our, by ourselves, so I really never even saw the SPED teacher. Like, they weren't part of our meetings, I, she would stop in and get data from me, and I didn't even really know what was happening. So when I became a SPED teacher and we started the PLC process, I was so grateful that I had, that we met every week. And so it's not my kids, your kids, it's all of our kids. I know the kids that are coming up in the SST process, I know who we have our radars on, I know who just might need interventions, and so it's just a benefit for, for all of our students. One thing, it talks about digging deeper, you saw all that data that they had, we have it too. And it's a lot, but we can look, and Stacy Largent can know where Rifen's kids are, I can know where Jody's at in a flash, just by looking at all this colorful data. So we're able to look and see with CFAs what's working, what's not, what we gotta change. We created these CFAs five, six years ago, but they're fluid, we change them up every year for rigor, or if it's too hard for the kids, and we just are able to teach or share teaching strategies. Things I might not know, they, they know, we just share.
Okay, so on to our successes. We have overall improvement of student learning. I think we're seeing the biggest bang for our buck this year. We've had first assessments that we've taken, and they have learned it, like, we've taught it for a couple of days, and it's like, what was that first one, like 20% proficient?
Yeah.
And so we put all the kids into a WIN group, and we're super intentional, and that's what we love so much about our data, is that we can look at our data and say, each of our homeroom classes and say, "All right, well, Chloe has the most kids proficient in her class, and so she needs to be teaching our low kids." And so we are very intentional with who is teaching what kids in, in our WIN groups, which is our intervention time abbreviated for what I need. So we're very intentional with our data, and like Rhonda said, all of our students are all of our students. We mix regularly, we have data-driven instruction, and within our PLCs, we also talk, like, like I said, "Okay, Chloe did the best job teaching, she has the most kids proficient, what did you do when you were teaching?" And so then we share in our PLC meetings what our different strategies were, and then we can take that into our WIN groups and into our classroom instruction also.
So for our next steps, is we're gonna be introduced, or including repair professionals into our PLC process twice a month, so they have more understanding of what we're doing, they can look at the data and understand where their students at, because they pull students during our WINTIME as well, and that stands for what I need. And we just spread out the kids, depending on what level they're at, and we work on them to get them where they all should be. And so pulling in those repair professionals during our WINTIME, so they have a clear understanding of what we're doing, I think will be very beneficial. We also will continue to work on our tier one, two, and three instruction as well during this time. Anything else?
So just to conclude, we're looking forward to seeing student growth in all areas. It's not just about Aspen. We come together every two, three months and do that with all four elementaries and work in teams. We just did that on Monday. So we're not only working for Aspen kids, we're working for Unicounty School District number one kids, and I think that's important, too. So we're all working towards doing better on, doing better for benchmarks and for our state testing and just their life skills. Any questions?
So I guess I got a question. How are the kids that have come up through, that were three years out on COVID, you know, they would have been the kindergartners, first grade kids coming through you, have you seen any labs in them kids, or are they?
I'm super grateful that we were only out for those few months and came back in mass, like, and all that, like, amen, but I, we do, we see a lot, especially with reading, because they lost some of those, those core foundational. So we're doing a lot of reteach even in fourth grade on maybe, for fourth and fifth, and like first and second grade skills.
So the kids we have this year, they were in first grade, like, so the end of their first grade, where they were really hitting hard into really starting to learn how to read, and we are seeing the ramifications of that, but with our PLC process, I think we have been able to be super intentional and super focused on how to reach those kids and how to work with them and intervene appropriately and at their level.
I also think one of our trickiest challenges is, is that some people kept their kids out for even longer, right? So then they come into the school missing maybe like two, sometimes even three years of education, and then all of a sudden they're in our fourth grade class without like the two or three years prior. So that's probably our biggest challenge, is, you know, working with those students and.
You know, then the next year, the masks, you know.
And I have one of those kids in my class, and I, I am so grateful for my team, including Steve and Kathy Hansen at our school, and the help and support that they are able to provide for me through this PLC process.
Awesome.
It's not just education, this is like, we're dealing with like, just how to be a student and anxiety, and how to walk in the hall with the rest of the kids, I mean, so.
Social and emotional.
Yep, but we're very supportive, so we're appreciative.
Any other questions or comments, guys?
Just, I'm impressed, well done.
Thanks.
Thank you again for everything you do.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah, thanks.
So next on our agenda is some discussion items, and first up, we're going to do the concussion protocol.
Chairman Peterson, members of the board, a lot of Jackie come up. Jackie is our new athletic trainer, I think she presented herself when we hired her, but...
Same day, yeah.
Yeah. We tasked Jackie with going through our concussion protocol. If you remember, we had some concerns expressed, and we were comfortable with the protocols we had, but we felt it was important and we updated it. Jackie has gone through our protocols, provided a great deal of information. Kind of our plan on this is we will take JJIF R1 and make this the plan that Jackie's working on. The hardest thing is to develop a plan, especially with concussion protocols, that is understood by our coaches, our students, our parents, medical providers. It has to be a plan that we can follow, because we understand the importance of these concussion protocols, and the challenge of concussion itself is so different. So what, I'm pretty sure you probably don't want Jackie to read all of these protocols, but I think you need to ask the questions in terms of kind of what she's seeing, where she's got this information, and then we still have some updates and some improvements and some changes, but you will approve this hopefully at reading, that first reading later today. So Jackie, time's yours.
Thank you. I'm Jackie. Yes, so this is, sorry, this is my protocol. My brain's still like in practice, I just left practice mode, so apologize. So just so y'all know, yeah, when I first started here, the first conversation I had with Megan Kennedy, our school nurse at the high school, was, "How can we make the concussion protocol better?" And I had that conversation with a lot of people, and so this is kind of where all this is stemmed from. So I began typing up everything from multiple research articles, and then if y'all aren't familiar with the NFL, the Miami Dolphin quarterback Tua Tagovailoa, that situation that occurred, long story short, he got hit, clearly had a concussion, was looked at in the locker room, got sent back into that game, made it through, played again four days later, got hit again, and went into a decorticate fencing posturing because of the neurological damage that he sustained. So there's a huge blow up in the NFL world, and they immediately adjusted their protocol and also put it out in the public. And so I have that, that was attached in y'all's readings, and it will be a part of this protocol as well, so we have, I've utilized that, too. After I made the protocol, Megan and Tiffany, the school nurse for the middle school, she and I went through it, and then we set up meetings with Cory Carver and Bailey Jensen, their nurse practitioners here. We went over it with them to get their feedback, changes, their approval, disapproval on things, and that went really well. And then we met with Dr. England, Dr. Kepner, and then Matt Mitchell, who's a physical therapist that works closely with them, went through it with them as well, same thing, what tweaks, comments, suggestions, do you guys have? And then we also, I also met with Brady Stokes and his team at Blacks Forks, because they have the contract with the school and helped, helped me out, and they have approved all this as well. So this is, and then I met with Bubba and Ryan, and we went through it and made it, it was, which was really good, because they're not medical providers, and they're like, "Jackie, what do these words mean?" I'm like, "Oh, yeah, I should define those."
You did stay at Holiday Inn, though.
You did.
So before finally coming to you guys, it has been read and given to lots of people and, and approval and everything like that. I wanted to try to get as much questions answered in this before coming here without having talked to anybody. So just so you kind of guys know, past three months, that's my big project I've been working on. So the first page has definitions, I won't go through those, but as you guys go through this protocol, if you're like, "I'm not sure what that word means," you can go back to that front page and look at it, it's defined there, and if it's not, you can let us know and we'll get it defined. The biggest definition, which is pulled word for word from the Berlin consensus statement, which that's the last time the world of sports medicine met to define a concussion and how we should treat it and what's going on. That's also one of the research articles that will be attached. The definition of the concussion is word for word right there from that article.
Read it, would you?
Yes, sir. So a sport-related concussion is a traumatic brain injury induced by biomechanical forces. Several common features that may be utilized in clinically defining the nature of a concussive head injury include the following. One, a sports-related concussion may be caused either by a direct blow to the head, face, neck, or elsewhere on the body with an impulsive force transmitted to the head. Two, a sports-related concussion typically results in the rapid onset of short-lived impairment of neurological function that resolves spontaneously. However, in some cases, signs and symptoms evolve over a number of minutes to hours. Sports three, sports-related concussion may result in neuropathological changes, but the acute clinical signs and symptoms largely reflect a functional disturbance rather than a structural injury, and as such, no abnormality is seen on standard structural neuroimaging studies, meaning we're not gonna see this on an MRI or CT scan, or x-ray or anything like that. Four, a sports-related concussion results in a range of clinical signs and symptoms that may or may not involve loss of consciousness. Resolution of the clinical and cognitive features typically follows a sequential course. However, in some cases, symptoms may be prolonged. The clinical signs and symptoms cannot be explained by drug, alcohol, or medication use, other injuries such as cervical injuries to the neck, peripheral vestibular dysfunction, et cetera, so ear issues, things like that, or other comorbidities such as psychological factors or coexisting medical conditions.
Good.
It's a pretty, yeah, pretty long definition, so, it's very gray. We love gray, not really. So that's the other thing, too, to understand with this protocol, is we are trying to put a black and white situation on a very gray diagnosis. So the protocol goes on to talk about before activity, so we're gonna baseline test these kids with the IMPACT test, which we've been doing that already. The IMPACT test is a computerized test, they, it takes them about 20 to 30 minutes, they go through a series of different things on the computer to look at their memory, eye response, quickness, different things like that, and goes through their symptoms. So there's about 20 symptoms, headache, dizziness, difficulty concentrating, do you feel irritated, do you feel normal, different things like that that the kids have to answer. And one thing I would like to add to their baseline testing is the SCAP-5, which is the, make sure I say all these things correctly for you guys, sport concussion assessment tool. This is the sideline tool that I do, that you, if you guys have went to any football games, you saw me doing that on a couple of kids. The SCAP-5 will also be attached to this protocol. Takes me about 10 to 15 minutes to do it. Same thing, I ask questions about orientation, do the kids know where they're at, check their balance, check their memory, check their neurological signs to determine if a concussion may be present or not. We can use that for baseline testing. What we would like to do is implement this next fall with our freshmen to see how time-consuming it is, is this possible to add in without it being too overwhelming for me and Megan, and hopefully we'll get some volunteer assistance in the community. It shouldn't take us long, because they shouldn't have a concussion, so, just getting a couple more things added to the baseline. If they do happen to fail the IMPACT test, sometimes they do avoid it tests, because they might have ADHD or dyslexia, we'll just have to double back to make sure their medical provider has cleared them and they don't have a concussion. Then we go on to dearing activities, so this, the no-go signs and symptoms, this is something the NFL added after the Tua Tagovailoa situation. So basically, if they exhibit one of these four signs after getting hit, and it's observed by me or referee or coach, they're automatically pulled from play, period, end of discussion. So these signs include loss of consciousness, ataxia, which is defined as abnormality of balance, stability, motor coordination, or dysfunctional speech, confusion, or amnesia. So, just, yep, that's what it is. Then I will do the SCAP-5 on the sideline with them, if it's appropriate to do so. If they get hit so hard that we need to be calling an ambulance, we'll take those next steps and do all of that. Hopefully, we never have to do that, but that is an option. If not, I will do the SCAP-5 on the sideline. That test is designed to be administered at time of injury, 30 minutes, and one hour and two hour from injury. Unfortunately, I am one person, and oftentimes injuries all happen at once. Again, if you guys have been to a football game, they always happen all at once, and Jackie's like, "Tch, tch, tch, tch." So hopefully with the help of Brady Stokes and his team, he and I can come up with a plan to administer the test at those times, but I'll do the best that I can with those time slots. The reason why we do that, again, is to determine if they're having a brain bleed. If they start to worsen in the results of the SCAP-5, we'll call the ambulance and send them out. One big point I put on here under that, too, is a sport-related concussion, and again, this is from a research article, is an evolving injury in the acute phase, so meaning right when it happens. It has rapidly changing clinical signs and symptoms. It is considered to be among the most complex injuries in sports medicine to diagnose, assess, and manage. The majority of sports-related concussions occur without loss of consciousness or frank neurological signs, so those four no-go signs and symptoms. Because of this evolving process, it's not possible to rule out a sport-related concussion when an injury event occurs. So then it goes on, I give you guys three likely scenarios that I will encounter if, when a kid gets hit in the head or might have a concussion. So athlete A, they get a direct blow to their head at a home event, so helmet to helmet, bad tackle, volleyball to the face, golf ball to the head, any, any situation you could think of. They don't have a no-go sign or symptom, I administer the SCAP-5, they fail it, so they have a concussion and they're automatically put into protocol. Athlete B, they get hit pretty hard, but this happens in sports. I may or may not have seen it, sometimes I don't see everything, but the coach or referee will let me know. Again, they don't have no-go signs or symptoms, I'll administer the SCAP-5 test, two things could happen. Two things could happen from this. They score pretty terribly on it, they have a concussion, they're in protocol. Or, and this is something that happens more often than I would like for it to, it gets blurry, it gets gray, they just complain of a couple symptoms. They have a headache, and they're dizzy, and they just don't feel right, but they do well in everything else. But because I can't disprove a concussion, the kid is most likely going to be pulled, and they're on protocol automatically. And then athlete C, they get a direct blow to the head, they have a no-go sign or symptom, they're pulled, and ambulance is called if needed. In all three of these scenarios, the athlete was determined to most likely have a concussion, therefore they're automatically placed in the protocol. And once they're in this protocol, parents and guardians cannot opt the athlete out of it.
So I'm going to interrupt right now.
Yes, go ahead.
So to opt out of the protocol, it has to be by a medical?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep.
MD?
So, yep, we'll get to that.
PA, okay, sorry.
Yep, no, that's okay.
I jumped into the middle of it, so I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, it's good, good question, yeah. So later I define healthcare provider, which is a medical doctor, or a PA, physician assistant, nurse practitioner, or a DO, doctor of osteology. Those are the four healthcare providers that can clear athlete from concussion. And I get, yeah, that's in there later, too. After this part, I just list more signs and symptoms. Again, that educational component for parents, coaches, and you guys to know, this is what I'm looking at, so you can kind of learn to, if they're at an away event, or they get, you guys get in a car accident, or a lot of time concussions happen outside of sports. So just so you guys know, hey, my kid's complaining of this, let me call Jackie and ask her, or call my doctor and ask them about it. Then the post-concussion event, so those next steps. So we'll inform the parent, that's the next thing that we'll do, let them know, hey, I believe your athlete has a concussion, here's some educational components to look for. Red flags, if your child starts to vomit, or has nausea, or sudden change in neurological symptoms, or an attitude, get them to the emergency room. That means something serious is going on, to let the parent know. And to let the parent know, your kid can sleep, it's okay, don't put him in a dark room, that's been debunked, we don't do that. Be as normal as possible. That's the biggest educational piece that I, parents still are like, oh, they can just do what they want? I'm like, yep. We want to decrease screen time if that's bothering them, but if they're hungry, eat, if they're tired, sleep, they just, we just want to try to treat them as normal as possible after they have the concussion. Parents will also be offered the option of supplemental insurance covered, that's provided by WHSA from the state. So we have supplemental insurance that will also be attached in the protocol. And then parents will be given a list of medical providers locally, if they don't know anybody, that specialize in evaluating these concussions. The healthcare providers that I took this to, they all specialize in looking at this. Other healthcare providers can do it, but these ones see it more often and are more comfortable with it. Then follow-up exams, so next day or next school day, they'll follow up with me or their healthcare provider, and we're going to do more thorough testing. The more objective data I can get my hands on, the better the kid is going to have it recovering quicker and appropriately. So I have a, I've defined all of those things at the beginning, they're just a bunch of cool, fun tests that I like to do. And this can also be completed by another physical therapist in town that treats concussions. Working together with them's been super awesome. And then this is where I define that they will also be referred to a healthcare provider, they have to see a healthcare provider. So that's the MD, PA, nurse practitioner, DO. Essentially, what that says next is they have to see that healthcare provider and be cleared before they can return to contact, which is one of the phases of the protocol. If they see the healthcare provider, and they're like, you know what, you're doing pretty good, just stay consistent with Jackie, and I communicate with them, then that's great, and I'll get a note from the healthcare provider. They might have to see the healthcare provider more than once, so every situation is different, but they have to be cleared by their doctor to like pass the baton to me for them to return to contact phase of the protocol. If an athlete is seen in an emergency room at an away event, it is required for them to follow up either with me or a local healthcare provider to make sure we know what happened and we can follow up with them on the injury. Most of the time, I hear about it, but we just want to state that in there, that hey, still come check in with Jackie or your local doctor. Clearance for return to contact play will only be accepted by a medically licensed healthcare provider. The following providers will not be accepted as clearance for return to play, so this includes chiropractor, physical therapist, midwife, and nurse. I have these on there because we ran into those situations in Green River, when I was in Green River. So a kid's relative was a midwife, and they tried to clear him, and we said, that doesn't work, so sorry. But yes, has to be from that healthcare provider. And then the athlete will finish the protocol in its entirety regardless of that clearance. The only way around this is if that healthcare provider provides a release of liability stating that a concussion never occurred or existed in the first place. This statement is also in Green River's concussion protocol, so I collaborated with Josh Lewis over there, and he said, Jackie, put that in there. I said, yes, sir. So they have to finish the protocol in its entirety, and this is to make sure that they're safe, and I'm safe, and we're safe. And we can anticipate that an athlete will recover from a sports-related concussion within about 10 days, but some studies have shown that if they have a greater number and severity of symptoms, it might take them longer. If the symptoms do happen to persist greater than 10 to 14 days, we will suggest to refer them out to a more specialized healthcare provider, a sports neurologist. And I will develop a list of people for the family to give that to them. And then if an athlete has sustained three to four or more concussions in about two years' time, we're definitely going to want them to see somebody more specialized to continue with contact play. There's not definitive numbers, this is, these numbers came from me talking with all the healthcare providers locally. Unfortunately, right now in the sports medicine world, we don't have defined numbers on how many concussions is too much and what timeframe. It's just, we don't know, because they're so different. You could have a mild one or a severe one. So we just wanted to kind of say, hey, if you've had a good chunk in a two-year span of time, let's go make sure you're okay to keep getting banged up. And then they'll take the IMPACT test, again, to determine readiness to return to play. So we'll have Megan or I administer that at the high school level, or Tiffany at the middle school level, compared to their previous results, and if they're doing great, that's another checkmark that they're almost ready to go back. We can also utilize the Buffalo concussion treadmill test, so this is something we can do to determine what level of aerobic exercise they can handle even in the acute phase. So more, the latest research is showing that we can actually get them on the bike a little bit quicker than we first thought, which is great, right? We want to keep these kids moving and not just being potatoes at practice. And then it goes on to the return to learn in protocol and before the return to sport. So these concussions affect these kids in the classroom. They have a hard time concentrating, or it's too loud, or the light is bothering them, the screen time is bothering them. So we have different phases to progress them through this, and we can make modifications. Recently, we had a student athlete need some big-time modifications, and I got to be in that meeting with the counselor and the teachers, and I just have to say, the school district is awesome, because you guys just gave that student everything she needed, so y'all are great. It like made me so happy to be here. But we just modified everything for her, and the teachers were like, whatever we need to do to support her through this, we're going to do this. And so we've been learning with the teachers on how to best make those modifications for the students based off what they're struggling with. They have to completely get back to school, no issues, before they can go back to contact play. Their classroom has to be good to go before the sports. And then we go to the return to sport protocol. There's a lot of words in this, so I can let you guys read it, but basically, they will spend 24 hours in each phase, and they have to have no symptom onset or increase within those 24 hours in order to move to the next phase of the protocol. And in order to begin going from the first phase, which is symptom-limited activity, into the light aerobic exercise, their symptoms basically need to be back to baseline, zero to one, or nothing, for at least 24 hours. Sometimes this is where kids get stuck, and so that's when we start implementing physical therapy quicker or other things like that. And that's one thing here, too, in Evanston, you guys have a lot of healthcare providers that love treating this and are good at treating it. And when I was in Green River, it was me. So this is awesome. The kids have so many options here of people to go to, and we can get rehab implemented in quicker, which has shown to help them recover quicker. So they'll go through that light aerobic exercise, and I'm the one taking them through this part of the protocol, communicating with the doctors and their physical therapists if they're going to one. Typically, phase two, they're just on the bike, and we're just doing a little something-something to get their heart rate up, and they're stretching, and still being involved in practice and paying attention. Then they'll go to that sport-specific exercise, so football, for example. I have them run ladders for 30 minutes on sideline, they love it.
Wow.
Yep. Sorry, I'm tough. But then we have, I'll have them do speed ladder, some different, depending on their position, they'll go through some position drills with the appropriate rest, they're not running for 30 minutes straight, but all of those things, and just depending on their sport and their position, I'm taking them through those activities. Then we progress to non-contact training drills, so just going up in intensity level. At this point, they should be back into weightlifting in CSB or SB, and just getting that heart rate up higher and higher. Then before that phase five full contact, that's where I need the doctor approval, you've passed IMPACT, your symptoms are good, I'm doing, I'm retesting all the objective measures or their physical therapist is, everything looks good to go. Hey, you get to go back to full contact practice, and then that goes well, and then they go back to sport. I think these five steps was what the big thing that was missing, these kids were getting cleared and then going back to practice. So we're going to take them through these steps to make sure their brain is ready to go. If they happen to get symptoms like at phase three, then they'll just stay there the next day, or as long as they need to until they're ready to go. And sometimes doing that strenuous activity sparks things again, that's okay. We adjust their rehab exercises and then continue from there. And I have made a giant Excel spreadsheet for all the coaches, that, that way we all have one place to go to where they know which kid is in concussion protocol, where they're at in it, and what they can and can't do, even in CSB, and that's been super helpful for me and the coaches, because sometimes I can't get to them quick enough, so they just go on that Excel, Google Excel sheet and look at it, so the kid's not lying. But yes, that is hopefully a quick synopsis of the long protocol.
That's great.
Any questions at all?
Yeah, Jackie, do you feel comfortable with what you've got?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay.
Yeah.
One other question, and it's kind of off the thing here, but we address kids getting back from concussion to be able to compete.
Yes, sir.
So athletes get other injuries? How do we address the other injuries to be able to come back to compete in a, in the best situation for the athlete?
Yeah. So I have met, almost all the doctors here have their phone numbers, and been communicating with them, and implementing that, and letting the kids know, hey, your doctor and I are communicating, and also implementing with them and the parents, and talking a lot with the parents, too, of, I need doctor's notes, and I'm trying to be the funnel for all of that, and just kind of helping make that more streamlined, so we know what they can and can't do. And then once I have that information, or I'm talking with their physical therapist, like, hey, what are you guys doing in PT? Can we get them up in the weight room while they're at practice? So when I have all that information, that's what we're doing. Again, I don't want these kids being potatoes. Just because your arm hurts doesn't mean your legs don't work, or vice versa. So I take them up in the weight room, if everything's smooth at practice, and I have them on the bike or doing a couple circuits of exercises. I'm also a strength and conditioning specialist, so I can monitor all of those things. And still keeping them moving and progressing them based off the doctor and their PT, and/or just what I think if I'm the one running the show, and communicating with the coaches. So like I said, that giant Excel sheet I have, it's called injured humans, and coaches have access to it as well, what can they can and cannot do in CSB in the weight room, and if they are injured, here are things, alternative things they can do at practice, so they're not just sitting there and then progressing that each day. And it's, I think it's been received well, so it's keeping the kids busy, which they like. Did that answer your question?
It did. And on your spreadsheet, at any given time, how many athletes will there be?
Well, it just depends. Right now, I think I only have about four or five that are really injured. We're doing pretty good right now, and actually, most of them are about to roll off of it, so it's been a good start to basketball, wrestling, and boy swimming, so they're doing good. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? None?
Sweet.
I just got to say, I'm sure I'm glad we waited for you.
Oh, thank you.
Serious, we've tried this for a long time, and I think we got the right person at the right time, so thank you very much for being with us, so.
Well, I feel lucky to be here, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yay. Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Jackie.
You're welcome.
All right, next on our discussion items, the Red Devil Ranch water.
Before I dive into that, Ryan, will you do me a favor and just briefly?
Give the board a history of the Red Devil Ranch. I know you have more information about it than I do.
Sure. If you recall, we have 60 acres out of transportation, and of those, about 40 are available for ground.
Irrigation.
Yeah, irrigation. It borders the Davison's Ranch, and I can't even remember how many years ago we came up with the Red Devil Ranch, and started rather meager. The whole plan was to raise a few cows, generate enough hay to feed those cows, get the kids involved through FFA, and now the ranch is, continues to move forward. Mr. Ellis is exceptional with the kids, exceptional with the ranch. There's challenges out there, water is one of them, and our ability to grow enough hay to continue raising additional cattle. We want to be a good neighbor out there, but we want that to be a true outdoor classroom, and it has been. We've been able to purchase, add equipment. The ranchers in our community are very supportive, and they've been wonderful, too. And so I just see the program continue to develop. I would love to, one day, to be able to have from farm to table, and to be able to use the beef in our food service, some things to work out there, but that's kind of the goal, is a classroom that is actually very relevant to what kids are doing. It's been very successful, we have some challenges to get over, and one of them is water. So we don't want to take from others, but we want to get our fair share.
Thank you, Ryan. For those of you who were not at the last meeting, or were not members of the board, we have been presented by Mark Harris, who represents the Evanston City District, that they are forming a petition to form that district, and the purpose behind the formation of that district is to gather funding in order to improve the ditch. It's the one that runs Clearup and Hilliard all the way through Yellow Creek and beyond. Our participation in this ditch district is going to be very limited, because we don't own a lot of property, we don't have a huge water right, we're, and we're sort of at the end of the ditch. But Mark asked for us to agree that we would not object, to participate, and that we would agree to be members in the ditch district. This would give us a say on how those improvements are made and how the funding is done with respect to that. One of the questions that I had last time that did not have clear answers was primarily, what kind of money are we looking at paying as participants in the ditch district? And I don't know that there is a clear answer yet, they have some estimates, and if you look at the packet, maybe you can, maybe you can't, I'll just go over these numbers real quickly, but it's page 93 of the attachments to the petition, and essentially, there's some anticipated PEO funding in the amount of 23 million. The applicant participation funding will be 4 million. The amount that Mark anticipates may be required to be paid by members of the district would be 2.6 billion, but there may be some other state funding available for that. At the end of the day, there's no way to know exactly what this will cost the district, because everybody's on the ditch who's participating, this is going to pay something in order for these improvements to happen, but they are absolutely necessary, that part, there is no question. That part, there is no question. The ditch is not in good condition. It needs significant improvement. I think they're talking about piping a good portion of it to preserve and conserve the water that's coming through there. Not enough water is making it through. Janice, maybe you can pitch in on some of this. You might have more information than I do. But the ditch is definitely not in good condition. It really is in desperate need of an overhaul. I know the district in the past, when it comes, our district, in the past, when it comes to these sort of projects that benefit not just the community, but the district as well, that we've wanted to be a good neighbor, as Ryan has mentioned. Mr. Ellis is very much in support of this. I know most of the board last month indicated that they were in support of this. And so that is what is going to be presented for the vote. As far as legally, once we've agreed to participate legally, we would be obligated to participate in funding as well. But I'm hopeful, looking at the plan, it's well organized, it's well led, there's good leadership involved. I think that they are very mindful of trying to keep the cost to a minimum in making these improvements, but they are absolutely necessary. So any questions? Maybe if I can't answer them, Janice might be able to answer some questions. But any questions?
So I guess my question is, is how many individuals are part of the district, the ditch district? As we divide up $2.6 million and we have 80 users along the ditch, probably a lot less than that, that's a pretty significant amount of money that's got to come out per individual. And if we don't get any state funding with that, are we going to be held holding the key? And a good chunk of the money to put?
Ultimately, I think that that is a possibility. I don't know what the total number is, Janice. No, I looked, but I didn't count it up.
Water rights?
Yeah.
There's not very many. There's not a lot of water rights on that ditch. There's a lot of people taking from that ditch, but there's not a lot of water rights.
Chairman Peterson, I can't imagine it's going to necessarily be proated based on the amount of water that you have available. It wouldn't make any sense.
No, I know. It's not going to be split evenly. But what I'm saying is that $2.6 million, even if you have 40 acres out of the 10,000 acres that's supposed to be irrigated, I mean, you still got a chunk of money that's going to have to put out for, for that.
And that may be the position that has to be taken is we don't want to get in anyone's way. We'll support this, but if it comes out that it's not sustainable financially, we'll have to somehow get out of there.
I suspect we won't be the only ones concerned paying a massive bill.
I was surprised it was that much. I was, at $2.6.
Is that to repair?
I think it includes the piping of it.
Because it's, it's a mess. And I mean, it's in bad shape by the way.
Has there been any input from the city for any kind of concerns?
There were grants that was paid for all of it, including a green space in our 40 acres. And I know they're still pursuing those grants.
They are.
I don't know if you've heard anything with that.
The whole thing is they're putting, putting the water underground. It will be piped, it will be pressurized, which will benefit every person that is on that ditch, even the last ones like us. I'm under the impression that it will be funded. Between the state and everything, it will be funded.
I think that's the hope.
I know that's the hope, but once you commit to it, you're committed to it.
There's no doubt about it.
At what point can you pull out?
There's got to be a way legally.
Well, we'll have a voice in it, but.
I think that's, I guess my comment would be.
It's always been my concern.
If Mr. Ellis supports this with his knowledge base and what he does, I have no reason not to support it either, though he knows.
Well, I share Dave's concern, though. You know, to commit ourselves to something that we're not sure about and that kind of costs possibly, I have a little bit of heartburn over that.
Yeah, because if you, once you get through the town, I mean, because the ditch goes right behind my house. So as soon as you start irrigating, you're at Pekston's and you're at Dave's and you're at Davis and you're at the ranch. I mean, and we're piping a lot of water, running a lot of pipe to get water to that point. Trust me, I'm all for the piping. And loss of water and, and on the conservative side, conservation side of it, it makes a lot of sense. And it has to be done. But to hold five people at $2.6 million is scary.
It's a $27 million project, so there's reason for concern there with funding.
So what are our options, Jeff? If we table it, can we just keep tabling?
We can table it and see what happens.
If we approve it? I guess, are we locked in?
No, we're not locked in now.
I can't imagine if we said no, we'll turn it off.
We haven't objected to it yet, so there's been no objection. And, but we're not locked in. I mean, we could try and get some more information on funding. Maybe there's more out there. Janice, do you know?
Do you want me to make a phone call? Because they met yesterday at my house. J U B was at my house yesterday. I don't know what they came up with, but I could call Mike and he could probably tell me in a minute what you're asking.
Sure.
That would be fine. We can move on to a different discussion item.
Yeah, we could.
You want to excuse yourself out of here, Janice?
Do you want me to do it now?
If you want to step out, yeah.
I was just going to add, you know, in terms of water, so we just received today the fully executed agreement for $110,000 to put a center pivot at Red Devil Ranch. So we received that through Perkins. So, you know, there will be, well, there will be a center pivot and we won't be dependent upon the.
No, you're going to have to do, you'll have to do a pond and.
And fresh water.
But you don't need, the pressurized water would come out of a pump. You'd have to fill a pond at that point. It wouldn't come through a pipe. I mean, so the center pivot don't matter. I mean, we'll be able to do.
It'd be easier with piping.
Oh, I know.
It'd be a lot easier piped.
We're continuing, we're continuing going forward with the ranch, so.
No, yeah, I know. So, but what I mean is, is the commitment on our part, that kind of money.
Is it a $2.7 million?
You know, is it, is it worth that kind of money for 40 acres?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's.
That's always been the concern.
I know originally, the Conservation District was on board with all of that as well. And was looking at funding a lot of that because, because I'd come home from a school board meeting and my dad talked to me about the fields over there and that the Conservation District had been hit up about paying for some of that. So I know they're, they're involved in this still some way too.
I know. And that's, I guess that's what's scary about it is the unknowing of what we're going to be left with.
It will not cost us anything. It'll be between the state and SCRS. I'm just asking. He's on the phone now.
Hey, good news.
All failed. Free is always good.
Okay, Andy, you know what, then you get to go back on Mike Davis.
Maybe Mark misunderstood. Because I have it in an email.
Are you listening? Mark told him.
I'm there.
Okay, Mark told him it would cost that.
$2.6 million.
Well, that's probably the cost of the whole irrigation project. But there's grants and funds out there. It shouldn't, it would cost them a tab in a solar unit, and that's minimal to what the, you know, all this, all the, it'll be covered under the water development, the commission, the NRCS, and there's another one out there, and I can't think of it right now.
Okay. You just joined the school board meeting?
Welcome back, Mike.
You just welcomed back to the school board meeting, Mike.
You made us feel much better.
They're happy now.
Okay, well, is that, is that Jeff Phillips?
Yeah.
I would like to have him, excuse me, possibly, well, have him explain the situation.
We can table it for one more month. It's not hurting.
Okay, that sounds great.
When we have a ditch meeting, who could I call from the school district to attend these meetings?
Okay, who does he call from the school district to attend these meetings?
Just tell him to show up.
Caleb Gild, either ranch.
I would, I'd love to have him talk to us about it.
Could we bring him on the agenda?
I see. I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
No, they would want somebody to represent the school district when they have these.
Brendan Ellis, I guess.
I agree. Yeah, I agree.
I prefer to have Brendan come to the meetings and he can relay the information.
That'd be better, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, sounds good.
We have a good plan.
Thank you.
So as of right now, I think we need to table this for another month? And then we will discuss it again. In the meantime, we need to get our ducks in a row.
I'm thinking there must have been some kind of misunderstanding.
Okay.
Between Mark and me in the email chain somewhere there because it's not, even when he told me, I thought, I asked him if he was sure. And oh, yeah, I'm sure. But I think there was, somewhere we got our wires crossed. So that makes me feel much better. It didn't make sense to me.
The people who are going to be upset are the ones that live up underneath.
Yeah, I always had the impression this was going to be.
Because there's no more seepage.
I thought we were looking at grant money primarily and some conservation money for this from the beginning, so I was always confused. But that makes me feel much better.
So when we get to our action items, do we just need to table it at that point?
Yeah, let's do one more month and then we can.
We'll table it for another month, put it on the agenda for January.
Sounds like we're on the right track with this one, though.
Okay. Sounds fantastic. So is there any more discussion on the water, Red Devil Ranch water? Going once, going twice?
Doug.
So.
You have Brendan.
Okay. Next on our discussion items, the opening plan review for the SIR3.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is one of our obligations to the SIR funds is every six months, the board has to review the opening plan. If you recall, the opening plan is what was required by our district to reopen schools after COVID. So that plan has to still be in place and it has to be reviewed every six months. So we reviewed it in September, I believe. We were a little late. No, it was June. We were a little late. Sent it to the nurses, took all their suggestions. It's been updated with their suggestions. The bottom line is we still have protocols in place in case COVID turns its ugly head. We have Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three like we did before. There are no mandates. It's very generic, but required to have a section in there about our use of SIR3 funds. And you already heard from the auditor, we just got our audit of SIR funds approved. So we're doing right things. So this is simply the board accepting the changes that have been made by the nurses. Minimal.
Yeah, so I went through it today, so.
That's all I have.
Okay. Any discussions on it at all? Anybody's reviewed that or discussions? All right. Okay, fantastic. The next one on our discussion items is our official newspaper. And have we had anybody else come in? We just have the one still?
Mr. Chairman, this is what we do annually, so you'll approve this in January. Our official newspaper is the Herald.
Okay. All righty. Next on our discussion items is depositories for the district funds.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to review those or?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, yearly, we, the board decides which depositories are approved. We have deposits in First Bank, Uwena Bank, Bank of the West, Wells Fargo Bank, Rio Star, which is the state capital, and Wyoming Government Investment Fund, which is, it's similar to YO Star. So things are kind of scattered around those, those things. Any questions?
I don't think the initial part of that is board members have interest in those depositories they have to make.
Yeah, we have that sheet.
What that means is not that you have a deposit in any of those that I talked about, but that are you or any of your family members of the board of, of the various banks? In other words, there's an interest in that. Okay?
Thank you.
Fantastic. I guess to our last discussion item, the board meeting schedule. We had a little discussion earlier about that and the executive session. And Ryan, do you want to approach this a little bit?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we always present the schedule for, this is actually starting July 23 through June 24. Seems way off there, but we've always put it to the board and members of the board what days are best for you. Traditionally in our district, except for the last eight, I believe, we always had the second Tuesday. It was moved to the first Tuesday for the last eight years to take into consideration a conflict by one of the members. It's worked out. For us, whatever the board desires, we'll be here. The challenge that we have specifically when it's the first day of the month, for example, August 1st, 2003, is the first Tuesday. It's impossible basically for our business office to have the warrants ready for you to approve. Still not a big deal, except it just has to be pushed for another month. So really, it's the discretion of the members of the board and what works best for them. We tried to line it up. I believe the city council is the second Tuesday.
City councils every Tuesday.
Every Tuesday.
Right.
I guess it doesn't matter. John would probably ask you move to the second Tuesday.
I guess that's the discussion we need to have as a board. I don't know if anybody has got any opposition of changing to the second Tuesday.
I do.
You do?
I do have a conflict every second Tuesday, but I could try and make arrangements.
I think it's a good idea to accommodate our business office. You know, we did the second forever and then, you know, because of certain individual, we changed that. But I'm okay with going back the second.
Would it be bad to go to the third?
The third, the third makes it a little bit of a challenge to.
Pay the bill.
To have the approval of the bills.
So ideally, the second Tuesday is best.
What I'm saying is this, if some, some boards do a ratification of the bills, in other words, the bills go out at a certain time and you are basically ratified.
After the fact.
After the fact. So it could be the third, but what I don't want to do is the third, you've got people that are, you know, it's, it's 30 days and then they start getting antsy on that. If, if the board doesn't have a problem with a ratification of the bills, then we send them out on the 10th, you know, and could send it out to you and if there's any that you want to pull from that.
Mr. Chairman, what we can do is, this is just for discussion tonight. I can actually put one together that has the second Tuesday, send them out early to the board. We can look at and see. There is a conflict, I would suggest we stay with the first.
Well, I can try and make arrangements, though. Let me see what I can do in this next month to make arrangements to have that changed and then.
Next couple days, I'll send out another example, starting with the second.
Give us two options. We'll go option first Tuesday, second Tuesday.
Be an motion. Right now, it's just a discussion item, so.
I know. Put it in a form of motion later or not?
Yeah. Yeah, we have to approve it later.
Typically, what we do with those, it's in the consent agenda. At this time, it won't.
Any other discussions on that? All right. That concludes our discussion items. I guess we'll move forward to public comments. And if we have any public comments, please step forward. And please state your name, your address, how many kids you have in your hand.
Mr. Chairman. Congratulations, newly elected Mr. Chairman and newly elected board members. My name's Ryan Berger. I live at 60 Washeki Drive here in Evanston. I just wanted to make myself known publicly. I've just started to come out. I am the House District 49 elect for the state of Wyoming. I'm representing our community. Something I did want to make official that some of you do know, I've had a conversation with Mr. Thomas about this, but, and a few others, but I'll make it official right now. And it's on the legislative website. The Speaker of the House, Mr. Albert Speaker Summers, he's from Pine Dell, Southwest Wyoming guy, rancher, conservative, very conservative, especially for water, but has asked me to participate on the Education Committee and the Transportation, Highways, and Military Affairs Committee. Affairs Committee. So those were two of my top committees that I had asked for and areas that I'm passionate about, not just because I have careers in them, but I have many friends and I feel that especially in area of transportation is really important with IAD right here and something I'm excited and honored to be a part of. Earlier, you tabled a little bit of discussion on especially the water at the Red Devil Ranch, things like that. I've been to the Conservation District meeting, I know, reach out to those people, there's a lot of money there, seeing what they're doing, I hear about some neat projects they're doing. The state is also, but John Conrad, Representative Conrad, Haster 49 over in the valley, he'll be on the water committees. Does a lot with water, especially with his career over at the mines, does a lot there. He's on mining and water. He's going to be a part of the governor's task force on the Colorado, all that. So guys, when it comes to water, please reach out. When it comes to education, reach out. The session starts the 10th. If you have to table anything, do it, let's do it. And one thing I've told our community and our leaders, I would not have done this without the full support of the people who are my leaders in my job, wouldn't have done it. And we have that in our district, which is really good. I have full support of that and I have a really good staff. When I leave here to support what I'm doing, you guys know, I'm the special ed teacher at the high school, I do the learning lab kids, Special Olympics, all that, so that's just going to be hard, but they don't want Mr. Berger to go as much as Mrs. Berger didn't want him, but I'm going. Mr. Thomas is excited for me to get the heck out of here. But when you come to Cheyenne, please come to Cheyenne. The dream has become a reality. Mr. Fackel and I used to play Mr. President and Mr. Vice President. Obviously, I was always the president and at playtime in the backyard, so it's become a reality. But here we go.
What's up, Mr. Vice President?
Right? Well, you always said that. No, I'm just, and my last, just please get up, I can't do this alone. And that's one thing, this is, you can't legislate alone. You have to rely on everybody and we have to do this together. So I'm ready to go. So let's go. There's a lot, there's a lot of issues coming up, a lot of bills in education, they're going to be coming up, and funding is one of them, obviously, it always is. And those two committees are the largest funds in the state. Education, number one, one point, generally, it ends up for the biennium, 1.8 billion after you pay the special ed bill. And transportation is right in there, probably in the, it's high as well. I don't know what those numbers yet, I've just started learning those there. But we have a lot of money, a lot of money saved, seeing the governor's commitment, that's out, that's public now. The appropriations committee, they're going to start meeting on the governor's stuff right now. This session is not the budget session, it's the supplemental budget session, so the appropriations meeting on the governor's supplemental budgets and recommendations and then all the departments' recommendations, so they're going over that stuff right now. Lot of stuff to know, a lot of things. One thing that I will say that I am proud of, being on the Education Committee, how those members and especially the members of the LSO, Legislative Service Office, look to our fellow John Williams, our chief, he's really, really good. So just know that they ask about him a lot and he knows a lot.
You can't have it.
They can't have it.
Don't try. Tell them he's not really good.
Well, yeah.
He's awful.
So there's a lot of things coming up, what we're doing with concussion, our new hire, where she.
She left.
She leave, she's just amazing. I wish I would have been able to coach with someone like that. Thing about concussions, and I will say this, and I'm sure you guys will meet with me later anytime, but one thing I want to say about that is concussions just don't happen on the football field, a lot do, but they happen all over. Even in choir, on a bus trip, when the kids are excited and boom, hit their head in the door, you know, I've seen it, I've been doing this for a lot of years, and it's awareness of that, you know, it's a serious issue on a lot of levels. So anyways, but again, just continue doing what you're doing. Congratulations on your newly elected appointments and let me know, I'm always available.
I'm going to make one comment here.
No, I'm done.
If you attack it like you do everything else, you're going to be fantastic.
Well, appreciate it.
What you did with that cross-country program and things that you've been involved with, special ed, Special Olympics.
Appreciate it.
Hands off, hats off to you.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
My biggest motivator in life is when people tell me that I can't. And so I step back and I reassess myself and I say, let's go. I've had people tell me, there's no way you could do this. And I step back and we've got a really good community and I feel, after the election, I feel real supportive and I just hope you know, you have a voice. One thing I do expect, or if you do, just give me the numbers, because I can do a lot with numbers. We're all passionate, but give me the data and we can take it there. Now, I'm not going to play middle school games, not going to play the game of Freedom Caucus or this caucus or that caucus. I'm a Republican and I'm going to be in the Republican caucus, 100%. People are trying to tell me that I'm not a Republican. I've been a Republican. I'm alive. Everybody thinks I'm not, but I am, and I've been that. And I don't know why they tell you, but they try to tell you that you're not. I am. So I am for what we are and I believe in that strongly and that's who I am. I don't like that. So I like it when tell me people I can't be a Republican and I just step back, say, you want to make a bet? You know, go play your little middle school games, because it is like a little middle school game over there sometimes when they get real defenses and they cry a lot, you know, and whoa, and nothing gets done. So I hope you guys feel you have representation. The state, the speakers, the leadership in the legislature are happy, they like passion, they like, for some reason, they like this, you know? I did say, I want to write my first bill, one last thing, I want to write a bill to make all the use and the making of roundbells illegal. You know why? You know why?
The house can't have square meals.
Square meals, the county needs a square meal. A square meal. Joe's looking at me, Joe didn't get it.
We're out at the Red Devil Ranch.
We gotta go square meals. Right, Mr. Bennett?
Square meals.
Boy, I said it right on the floor and everybody was like, really? So anyways, Cheyenne, look out, you're going to get burgerized. Right? And congratulations on your retirement, I don't get publicly. Janice, you've done a lot for me as far as a coach. What you did when you came in to take over the girls, the classics, no one wanted it, I remember. And you took it a long ways and the state championships and all that, you know, and I watched you, the commitment you put into your program, that's the kind of commitment I want to do for my community, it's what I did with cross-country, but it's leaders like this, leaders like Mr. Bennett, Mr. Thomas, those people who do that kind of stuff that I, you know, there's people watching you, I watch you, you know? I still want to park on Red Devil Drive without having to serve detention. Do you remember that? So anyways, so we watch that stuff and I love it, you know? Mr. Rigby, all of you guys, so. I want to, there he is, Mr. Quiet. I watch him and we all have great, great, unique characteristics about it. I've already talked enough, I got to stop. So anyways, call me, text me. When I'm in session, I can't talk, but you can text and you can just say, Ryan, or I'm in a committee meeting or whatever. But whoa, last thing, one thing, during the interim session, that's not during the session, during the interim on these committees, they go to different places across the state and I sure would like to have like an education or even the transportation committee have an interim meeting, they do a two-day committee meeting, I'd like to have one here in Evanston. That would be kind of cool. I would like to, especially in April, have the Education Committee come and, you know, we put a lot of work into what we've been doing the last three, four years. And I thank our leadership, but everybody, you know, I mean, from our board to our teachers and we got to show that off and they're not seeing it. And so they're hearing about it and the last, since I've been in, I've been over to Cheyenne a few times and they're asking questions and that's good. Hey, you're there, you know, what are you seeing, Berger? It's been good. So I can't wait, it's going to be a lot of fun. So here we go, right?
Congratulations.
Congratulations to you, Ryan.
You'd be a good filibuster guy.
Keep bringing the backups here. Let him go, let him go.
I'm not stupid.
All right, do we have any other public comments? Anybody want to follow up, Mr. Berger?
Pretty tough act to follow.
Yeah, it's a pretty tough act to follow, so. So we have no more public comments, we will move on to our action items.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if we approve the pledge of our recommendation, is it approved?
It'll be, it's our new A.
New A.
Yeah, it's our new A. So our action item A, so. So moved.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? No discussion? Did you get that, Sherry? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, if any? None have it. Action item number B, approval of liability insurance renewal.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is actually really good news. And John can answer the questions about our new, our recommendation for liability insurance. It will be a new carrier without limitations. We do have a rider for concealed weapons.
Okay.
And it's better coverage for less money, if you can believe that.
Really?
So if you have questions, John, do you think you want to say about liability insurance?
Is this one that was at the?
No.
No, this isn't.
This was one that Teko's down.
Okay.
So they gave two quotes and this one that, we got the secondary quote, we got it yesterday and I was gone, so I really had, went through it today, is an umbrella coverage as opposed to a blanket coverage, which is more comprehensive, and it's $7,000 cheaper.
Cool. Nice.
So we recommend that you approve right?
Yeah, there's about four companies that are in that package. We're cobbling out, you know, so.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the liability insurance renewal. Second. The first and second, Brian Woodward was the second. Do we have any discussions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? None opposed. Next on our action items is item C, approved second reading of the IDA Temporary Virtual Education.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if you remember, this allows us to, on a snow day or a day where we don't have school, we can make up that day virtually. So this is just an extension of the policy to allow us to do that. We still have to make up the water day, the high school, and the high school administration is working on that date. Now, once this is approved, we do it virtually.
So I need to have a motion to approve the second reading of the IDA Temporary Virtual Education.
So moved.
Jenny?
Second.
Dan? Second. Any discussions? No discussions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? No opposition. Next on the item is we have item D, approved first reading concussion protocol.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is good to see before us. We've been waiting patiently to get it done right. I think this is a really good first step. We will spend some time this month to put it in a way, the way Jackie explained it, made total sense.
Total sense, yeah.
We need to make sure everyone can see that same priority. So we'll put it in the JGI R1 and put it in that format for everybody. So we recommend that you approve this at first reading.
Okay. So I need a motion to approve first reading of the concussion protocol. So moved.
Second.
So did you get them?
Thank you.
All righty. So do we have any discussions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? No opposition. Next, on action items, we have the item E, Board Resolution Authorizing Legal Action.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if you're okay, I would like to read the impact statement that we provided the coalition for the ECA. If you recall, we joined that coalition, I think in August, we provided an impact statement. This impact statement will hopefully clarify the resolution that's before you and for our community. So I'd like to read this impact statement if I can. Impact statement to whom I concern, as a representative of Uwena County School District Number One, I have been asked to describe the impact of a lack of a consistent external cost adjustment ECA to the Wyoming funding model. Seven out of the last nine years have been inconsistent in the manner in which the ECA has been applied to state funding. The direct impact of this inconsistent funding is in our ability to provide a competitive salary and benefits to our staff. Uwena County School District Number One is falling behind not only in our state, more significantly, we have lost the ability to recruit along the Wasatch Front in Utah. This includes universities within 100 miles of our community, which would be Weber State, University of Utah, Breeding Young, Utah State, and Utah Valley. The indirect impact is the continued use of operational funds, cut to building the department budgets, and staffing reductions to balance our annual budget. I am grateful for the block grant, which has allowed us to provide a quality education for our students and do what we can for our staff salaries and benefits. Uwena County School District Number One has experienced declining enrollments in 10 of the last 12 years. We have lost 300 students in the last 12 years, or an average 25 students per year. By the way, we're 57 students less now than we were at this time last year. It is not a significant number per year, but the impact on our funding is problematic when added to the inconsistent application of an ECA. Six of those 12 years, we have received an increase to our entitlement from the state. The average increase for those six years has been 828,000. The six years, our entitlement was less than the previous years, the average decrease has been 345,000 per decrease. Our largest increase was 1.1 million and the largest loss to our entitlement was 580,000. It is impossible to plan for the future, including meeting program and staffing needs, with such inconsistent funding. Following the numbers for the last 12 years, Uwena County School District Number One has received more funding than we have lost. However, these figures do not take into consideration our annual increase to insurance, salary, and other benefits necessary to retain quality staff, provide a living wage, and try to stay competitive on our state and region. In the last 12 years, our average increase to salary benefits has been 956,000 per year. These increases have been reflective of our salary schedule and trend with health insurance increases and cost of living adjustments. Uwena County School District Number One has not provided large increases for staff and typically split the increased cost of health insurance with staff. The net effect is that our teachers, support staff, and administration are losing money each year. We have not been able to keep up with inflation and staff competition in the market. It is our staff that has sacrificed to balance our annual budget and provide the quality education in our community. It is a fact that funding per average, that funding per average daily membership, ADM, or per student, has increased every year in the last 12 years. The average increase to ADM over the 12 years is 1.52% per year. It is also a fact that inflation in southwest Wyoming has averaged 2.01% a year over the last 12 years, which means school districts in southwest Wyoming are not keeping pace with inflation and in fact are falling behind, 0.51% every year. Inflation in the last two years in southwest Wyoming has increased dramatically above the average, 1.52%. The inflation rate for 2021 is 9.1%. It is likely that the inflation rate for '22 will even be higher than '21, since inflation in our nation is at highest mark in 40 years. We have that amount now, John. What's the current inflation rate that we just received?
9.6%.
9.6%. Yeah. It is clear that Wyoming's legislature's decision to remove the ECA for the '22, '23 school year was not only short-sighted, mean-spirited, and has negatively impacted all school districts in Wyoming. The funding model is certainly not cost-based if inflation outpaces the cost of living factors every year. In terms of recruiting high-quality certified teachers, there is a clear evidence in our district of a substantial reduction in the number of applications for every certified position. One example of the challenge we face, and this is typical, in 2013, at Evanston High School. School, we received over 100 applications for five open positions. In contrast, for the '22-'23 school year, we received four applications for four open positions. The district had no choice but to hire the four applicants for the four positions irrespective of their qualifications, experience, education, and quality. In nine years, our hiring pool has been reduced by 96 applications. The district no longer has the ability to hire the most qualified application for the position, instead the district often now hires the only applicant. The reason for this decrease in applications for position is simple, the decreased funding has resulted in district salaries no longer being competitive within 100-mile radius of the district. Reduced funding has caused Uwanda County School District Number One salaries to be less than the nearby school districts located in Lyman, Mountain View, Morgan, Utah, Park City, Utah, Heber City, Utah, Ogden, Utah, Orme, Utah, Provo, Utah, and Salt Lake City, Utah. The impact of the legislature not providing a consistent ECA that keeps pace with inflation is having a negative impact on all aspects of Uwanda County School District Number One educational program. Ultimately, it is our students that are being hurt by the inconsistencies in the funding model. If we do not have the ability to recruit and retain the best certified teachers in our region, we are destined to watch Utah, Idaho, Colorado, and Montana outpace and surpass Wyoming. It is our position that Wyoming students deserve the best possible education possible. For years, we out- competed our neighboring states for the best teachers. It is disheartening to see Wyoming fall behind with all the resources available to make a difference in the lives of our students. Sincerely, Ryan Thomas. The reason for that is truly the last paragraph, the impact is on our students. The reason for the resolution is because our students have been hurt by inconsistent funding from the state. So with that, I would like to read the resolution. It's interesting, I think it's perfect timing, the board, the majority, large majority, just swore an oath to maintain the Constitution of the United States and of Wyoming, and that's basically what this goes right after. This is Uwanda County School District Number One, board resolution authorizing legal action against the state of Wyoming. Whereas the Wyoming State Constitution guarantees the children of Wyoming an equal opportunity to a quality education regardless of where the student attends school, and whereas the Wyoming Supreme Court has ruled the right to a quality education is a fundamental right under the Wyoming State Constitution, and whereas supporting and opportunity for a complete, proper, quality education is the legislature's paramount priority under the Constitution, and whereas the competing priorities not of constitutional magnitude are secondary, and whereas the legislature may not yield to these secondary competing priorities until constitutionally sufficient provision is made for elementary and secondary education, and whereas because education is one of the state's most important functions, lack of financial resource is not an acceptable reason for failure to provide a constitutionally sound educational system, and whereas safe and efficient physical facilities with which to carry on the process of education are a necessary element of the total educational process, and state funds must be readily available for those needs, and whereas the legislature bears the burden of funding and providing constitutionally adequate facilities to school district that provide an equal opportunity for a quality education, and whereas safe and efficient facilities that are educationally suitable for student learning has been a longstanding need in Uwanda County School District Number One, and whereas Wyoming's education system and the physical facilities with which to carry on the process of education are not currently being funded accordingly to constitutionally mandates and governing law resulted in harm to this district, and whereas the board has diligently exhausted all potential means to resolve this conflict without pursuing legal action, and whereas these efforts to work with the state to resolve this conflict have proved unsuccessful. And whereas on August 18th, 2022, the Wyoming Education Association filed suit against the state of Wyoming alleging the state is in violation of the Wyoming Constitution by failing to provide an equal opportunity to a quality education for Wyoming students, and whereas this board has been appraised of said complaint, concurs with its claims against the state, and has additional and distinct claims of educational harm to students resulting from the state's failure to fund education adequately and equitably, and whereas this board recognizes that other similarly situated districts throughout Wyoming have also authorized litigation against the state of Wyoming, be it resolved that this board by majority agrees to authorizing legal action against the state of Wyoming to ensure educational funding complies with the Wyoming State Constitution and applicable government governing laws. Members of the board, it is my recommendation that you approve this resolution.
So, do I have a motion to approve the board resolution authorizing legal action? So moved.
Second.
I have a first and a second, do we have any discussion?
Nope.
No. Well, I think I want to comment on real quick on discussions, the maintenance department, what this district has done with the funding that they've been allowed, has done a phenomenal job on some of our facilities, you'd have no idea they're as old as they are. Just internally, we're having some issues now that are starting to pop up because of the age of these buildings and structures, so fantastic job in what you've put together, so, thank you very much. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposition? Aye has it, so we can move forward with that.
Fantastic.
Thank you. Next on our action item, to approve our opening plan.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I really want to say mad.
Oh, please do.
I'll wear a wig next time. Shave.
Well, take yours.
That's alright.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we recommend that you approve the opening plan necessary for the S R 3 funds.
Fantastic.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the opening plan with the S R funds. Second.
I have a first and a second, any discussion? No discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No oppositions, so it passes. So, next on this is we have a, to approve a student disciplinary actions that was discussed in our executive session.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, recommend that you approve the discipline of the students identified in the executive session as discussed.
So moved. Okay.
Second.
Got a move and a second, so Caleb and Brian.
Caleb and Brian.
Caleb and Brian on it. So do we have any discussions?
No.
No discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Ayes have it, passes, so, move forward with that. On our discussion item H, which is the Red Devil Ranch, I need a motion to approve the tabling of this until next month.
So moved.
Second to that motion.
I have a first and a second, any discussion items? We need to make sure that we maybe go forward with this, and make sure that we have somebody that is sitting on any of the meetings that we have going forward, and if that is going to be Mr. Ellis, then fantastic, and we just need to have that conversation, so. So, that's all I have to say. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No opposition? Move forward with it, so, we'll table it. All right, we move on to board roundtable. On the roundtable, do we have any discussions or comments from anybody on the board?
Yes, I do. Superintendent Thomas, we were at the meeting in Casper, and the governor spoke. Do you think that the governor could take care of this funding problem just by the influence that he can have to, let's not have this mess anymore?
Hmm, I'm glad you.
Trustee Bider, that's a yes or no answer, because he did recommend in his budget a full ECA.
Yeah.
But as the resolution states, the ECA is not only the only issue any longer, there is operational concerns.
Yep.
But there's also capital construction concerns in terms of inequities that the W E A's lawsuit addresses. We've discussed openly before, and everyone knows, that in the funding model, it's been since 2005, since the last time they adjusted the base salaries for teachers and administrators. 2005, how can it be cost-based? You haven't adjusted it.
Just so people on the board that maybe not know, what is the base salary the state has out there right now?
Well, the base salary for new teachers is 37,000. Our starting.
In the funding model.
Yeah, in the funding.
In the funding model, 37,000.
The, the average salary of the state is much higher than that, and for us, our starting salary is 48,125, so 48,000.
But it's not enough.
To make that happen is exactly the impact statement I read, is we've had to reduce staff in some areas and put that funding to our salaries, we've had to change our benefit packages, they're not as attractive as they used to be, and take that funding to pay for the benefits, but also to balance our budget. We've reduced staff, I think 13 out of the last 15 years to balance our budget, and that's been a downward trend because of declining enrollments too, but this year our staffing looks really healthy, but we can continue to cut from those areas. So, my, my question is, he can solve the ECA.
Yes.
And I think he's done that.
Okay.
The funding issue, you're gonna have to convince the legislature that education is a priority, and it has to be funded first, they have to fix the structural funding issue for capital construction, and there has to be a more equitable way to get services. Our, our evidence of inequity is Evanston Middle School as compared to Kelly Walsh High School.
Exactly.
Drona High School, and their swing space, which they did not pay for. We paid for our swing space, which we know as the Curwen, which was a transportation facility. Again, I could go on forever, and I already have with some of the principals, but it is extremely inequitable, and hopefully, we get a seat at the table to discuss these issues. I only could put the impact into two pages, I could have gone 15. So, I'm hoping that, that what will happen is we'll get a seat at the table, and we can discuss what's happened over the years and the inequities. It's not hard to see the difference, we built Evanston Middle School at the same time they built Kelly and the Drona.
Yep.
Yeah. So I hope that answered your question. That was a long answer, sorry.
It's alright. Any other items before the board?
Yes, please.
Yes, go ahead.
I would just like to thank the board members for appointing me to this position, it is, it is an honor, and I am grateful for that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Hi, and I don't speak for Trustee Barker, but she did ask me to bring up the Wyoming school boards, she really learned a lot, enjoyed it, given us some marching orders about some of the special ed components that are out there available to us, and so we'll move forward with that. It was nice to hear from the governor, and from our new superintendent of public instruction. It is a good conference, they squeeze a lot into two days, and I guess I'm also excited for the board members that will be attending the summit, H R S summit. You'll learn more about these professional learning communities that we've put into our system, and I'm really excited for that. There is training for new board members, there's workshop one, challenges facing new board members, for new board members and mentors, workshop two is the keys to effective board chairmanship for new and current board chairs. These are in Riverton, January 14th, Holiday Inn, and January 28th at the Hilton Garden Inn in Casper. So, if you'd like to attend that, just communicate with Sherry, we'll get you a vehicle and hotel and all that stuff that goes along with it. I'd encourage you to attend, they're very good, I know some of you have attended in the past.
Yeah, they're very good, they do a good job, and I've learned a lot since I didn't, you know, I had no background, and a lot of, a lot of the districts has the same issues we, we have, and, and they're nice people, so, if you can do the trainings, that'd be great. Excuse me.
I thought you were done. It would appear that the biggest key to successful chairmanship is to learn to respond equally to both sir or madam.
I do, I respond. I respond to a lot of things from my side, so I'm just doing it. So if I go to this, I get to take my secretary, otherwise known as Crystal.
Yeah. Might as well.
So I guess going back to the summit, the H R S summit, where we have new board members on here, has that been extended to anybody, or are we full at this point to go down there?
I think we're probably full.
Okay.
We have 10, is that what we, so, board members, principals, central office administrators.
Okay.
Good group. If we have more than 10, we'll be considered gay.
I got one comment, oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, there'll also be a P L C training in, I believe, Thermopolis in April, that I would encourage if you could go to, that's a lot closer than San Antonio. Thermopolis is doing some really big things with P L Cs, will fit right in with them, and we'd be invited, so.
Okay. Yeah, I attended the one down in Arizona, and it was, it was a learning experience for me, and I came back with a whole new appreciation for, for what the, the school district was trying to accomplish, so it was, well, worth the time to go down there.
It's nice, and I hope you guys see as these grade levels and these teachers come before you, the impact it's having.
Yeah, I'm impressed.
A lot of hard work, and it is making changes, improvements.
So, my last comment is congratulations to the new board members.
Yeah.
Fantastic, it's gonna be great working with you, couple of new ones on here, Dave's been on here before, so, we know how grumpy he can get at times, but that's alright. We love and appreciate Dave Bennett and his honesty and his opinion, so, again, congratulations to each one of you, so.
Thank you.
With that, I need a motion to adjourn school board meeting.
So moved. I make a motion.
You make a motion.
I'll second.
I'll second that.
You gotta learn to be fast on this.
Yeah, you gotta, yeah, quick draw.
I'm telling you.
Yeah, things happen fast.
Don't forget I have documents.
Yeah.
Aye. Hey, you don't want to.